Good evening. Welcome to the September 11th, 2017 legislative session. I'd like to call the meeting to order. At this time, I would request that everyone please turn off all electronic devices that make noise. If for some reason you have to take a call, please do so in the hallway. If for some reason there's an emergency that arises during the meeting, please exit the room, make a right-hand turn, and go down the stairs. Should that exit for some reason be blocked, please make a left and then a right, go down the stairs. If you should need assistance, special assistance, please ask and we'll be happy to provide it to you. At this time, I would invite Pastor Dana Stouffer of the Fruitland Campus of Emmanuel Wesleyan Church to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, before we come into this meeting, God, we just want to stop and remember, Lord, what happened back in 2001 on 9/11. And, God, and our hearts are touched and are moved tonight as we think of those who are grieving loved ones that are gone on before them during this event, God. And I just pray for the nation, God, our nation, Lord, that needs desperate prayer, God. I pray for unity and I pray for all the disasters that have just recently taken place with hurricanes, God, as people pick up the pieces. I pray that your hand would be upon them, God. And I pray for this council meeting tonight. I pray for each and every person that's sitting in a seat, God. I pray for wisdom and knowledge and understanding of all that needs to be done tonight. And I thank you for such a wonderful town as Salisbury, God. And I just ask again that your hand would be upon this meeting, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. I would also ask at this time, for a moment of silent meditation, to remember those who lost their lives and all those that have been affected by that loss. Thank you. Please rise now and join me in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Mayor, we have a presentation.
Mr. Council President, ladies and gentlemen, we have a couple. One thing that I just wanted to add, I won't ask for another moment of silence, but if you don't mind, if I'll add a couple thoughts to this day. Today marks the 16th anniversary of the terrorist attacks on our nation on September 11th, 2001, and I think everybody has probably at some point today reflected upon where they were 16 years ago, for those of us who are alive 16 years ago. Some people in the room are younger than that. More than cowardice, those acts, they were marked with a void of humanity, replaced by hatred for those who thought different than them. And their hatred killed 2,606 people in New York City, 40 more in Arlington, and 184 in Pennsylvania. And their hatred has killed many more since. It was a horrific day of loss. But the day after, that was a day that the nation resolved to be more strongly united. That day is the day that I want us to all remember. That was the day that brought us together, not hate based on differences, but unity based on resolve. As we move forward, we've got to keep those days of unity, compassion, and hope at the forefront of our minds, in every debate, every discussion, and in every deed. And as we move forward, we must also keep the sacrifice of those we lost that day at the forefront of our minds. We must remember those that went into the fire, those who placed all else above self and were forced to prove it by sacrificing their very existence. We must emulate that service every day to nation and to community. That's the foundation of resolve that we have to remain great, to remain free, and to remain these, the United States of America. Again, I won't ask you to join in another moment of silence, but I appreciate your time in letting me share some thoughts. I also have a proclamation today, and I have a couple friends that I'd like to invite up to help me with this proclamation. Josie and Mandy, can you join me? Hey, Josie, how you doing? Okay, so I have a proclamation here that names, well, let me just read it. The American Childhood Cancer Organization founded in 1970 is the largest grassroots childhood cancer organization in the United States and serves more than 100,000 families of children with cancer and supports and advocates for research that will lead to targeted, less-toxic treatments for children with cancer. And the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection report that cancer's the leading cause of death by disease among children in the United States from infancy through age 15, with 1 in 5 of our nation's children losing his or her battle with cancer. More than 15,000 of our country's young people are affected annually by this tragic disease, and many will suffer from long-term effects of comprehensive treatment, including secondary cancers. We must all be advocates for cancer's littlest patients and do our best to increase the awareness of the incidence and devastation of this disease on our children, and in doing so, raise awareness that continuous funding is needed for greater research that will hopefully result in much-needed cures for childhood cancer. The gold ribbon is the international symbol for childhood cancer, and quote, "going gold" means increasing public knowledge about the gold ribbon and what it symbolizes, that we care and support for children and their families who are waging this courageous battle against this deadly disease. So now, therefore, I, Jacob Day, the Mayor of the City of Salisbury, along with the Salisbury City Council, do hereby proclaim this September Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in our city and encourage all citizens to go gold in September to help increase childhood cancer awareness in our city and in neighboring communities. And Josie, do you know where the fountain is in the city park? Have you seen it before? Big fountain, bright in color. You've seen it? Okay. We've turned that fountain gold for you today, and it'll stay gold this month, and we've uplit it with gold lights because we're going gold for you. Okay? High five? Another high five? Awesome. Awesome. Mandy, do you want to share anything?
I've heard a little bit, if you don't mind, just about our story.
Of course.
Some of it's a repeat, but my name is Mandy, and this is Josie. And how old are you, Josie? Well, no, how old are you now? Six. She had a birthday in August. So she's not used to saying that she's six, but she's six, which is the average age that children are diagnosed with cancer. About six months ago, our life was turned upside down, and we were told that she has cancer, probably the worst news that parents can hear. And about every two minutes, a child is diagnosed with cancer, and a parent has to hear those words for themselves. And it's not as uncommon as most people think. Josie has neuroblastoma, which is, or I'm sorry, nephroblastoma, which is the cancer of her kidney, and it has spread to her lungs, which most of the time, children's cancer isn't detected until the late stages. So most of the time, it's at four, stage four, stage three. In June, she had her kidney removed and as much as the tumor that they could get, and so she's been in chemotherapy for the past six months and has two more months to go of that. So we are still kind of in the midst of this battle, and she is courageously fighting it. She has taught me so much in this process, watching her going through it. It doesn't discriminate, it doesn't pick, you know, it just, I've tried everything and done everything possible to keep her from cancer, and it doesn't matter. It's a nasty disease, and I just want to spread awareness and be the voice for the fighters, for the survivors, and for our angels of childhood cancer. We can't do this alone, so we appreciate your help and your support and coming beside us and going gold for the month of September and raising awareness for childhood cancer. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming, Josie.
Get a picture.
Make a picture back there, too. Let's do one here, and then we'll go.
Sit in the big chair.
Yeah.
Sit in the big chair.
Here, Josie, we can sit right here.
Here we go. You can use the gavel, too, okay?
Yes. Awesome, Joe.
All right. Question, yeah? You're in charge.
That is awesome.
Josie, you want to get to sit in my chair? You tell everybody what to do.
She's good at that. Very good at that.
They don't always listen, though.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'll now entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda as presented.
Second.
Mr. Iarton, Mr. Bouda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Bouda that time, and we'll give Mr. Bouda the second again. Good evening, Mrs. Nichols.
Good evening, Mr. Heath, Council. The consent agenda tonight, we have the August 21st work session minutes, August 28 regular meeting minutes, resolution number 2770, authorizing the Chief of Police to enter into an MOU between the Salisbury Police Department and the Boy Scouts America Explorers Program to adhere to the rules and conditions therein. Resolution number 2771, appointing the following positions or their designee to the Gatsby 45 Trust, the City Administrator, Human Resources Director, and Finance Director. And we have manufacturing exemption requests for Clearcom Technologies LLC for the equipment they purchased in 2012, 2013, 2015, and 2016, and over the next five years, they will benefit from this exemption by a total savings of $1,521 in their property tax. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to award the bids.
Second.
Mr. Iarton, Ms. Jackson. Good evening, Mrs. Miller, how are you?
I'm great, thank you. The first item this evening is the award of bid for contract RFP 11-17, that's the Riverwalk Amphitheater. The City of Salisbury Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to solicit proposals to design, permit, and construct a Riverwalk Amphitheater. The city followed standard solicitation practices by advertising in the Daily Times, on the City of Salisbury's website, utilizing the city and county vendor list, and advertising on the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace. Three vendors submitted a proposal by the due date and time of Tuesday, August 8th, at 2:30 PM. All three vendors were deemed responsive and responsible, and their proposals were evaluated according to the criteria specified in the solicitation document and then ranked on a scale of zero, which is unacceptable, to four, being superior. Delmarva Veteran Builders submitted a pre-construction cost of $47,500 and received a score of 3.45. Whiting Turner submitted a pre-construction cost of $65,000 and received an evaluation score of 3.07, and SEPCO submitted a pre-construction cost of $400,000 and received an evaluation score of 2.07. Upon completion of the pre-construction phase and achieving 90% design plans, the guaranteed maximum price for the project will be negotiated with Delmarva Veteran Builders. This price will then be added to the contract via a change order. A total expenditure of $400,000 for construction was approved in the FY18 General Capital Projects Budget contributions for this project. The procurement department concurs with the award recommendation submitted by the Department of Infrastructure and Development and thereby requests council's approval to award a contract for this project to Delmarva Veteran Builders in the amount of $47,500 for pre-construction services. Funds are available in the account noted in your packet.
Questions or comments?
There is a significant gap there between the top bidder and the two lower bidders. What was the difference in that? And what's the expected final cost of the project?
Sure. So $400,000 is budgeted for the project. We have $50,000 budgeted for this pre-construction services phase. We suspect that SEPCO did not understand how to submit a correct price proposal. We were only looking for the price for pre-construction services, which is what this is. And then, once the design is done to that 90% design, then we'll talk about price, and it could be anywhere up to that $400,000 mark, but might even come in less than that.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The next item is a request for surplus for a few police department vehicles. Our department, the Department of Procurement, received a request from the Salisbury Police Department to declare three vehicles, Unit 14, Unit 33, and AC2, as surplus. Unit 14 and 33 are nine and 16 years old respectively, have high mileage, and are in need of repairs that would exceed the value of each vehicle. AC2, which was utilized by animal control, was involved in an accident and was declared a total loss by the city's insurance company, Legit. Additional details regarding the needed repairs are noted in the departmental memos attached. I did put the unit numbers there, the vehicle, and the VIN numbers. I do want to call to your attention, I did inadvertently omit one of the vehicles. It was on page two of the department memo. I will include that at the next council meeting. Upon declaration of surplus only for the three items noted and as approved by council, the Salisbury Police Department and/or the procurement department will attempt to sell Unit 14 and 33 at auction. If unsellable through this method, the vehicles will be sold locally as salvage. AC2 will be salvaged by Legit for $10,453.49.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the award of bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Ms. Glanz, could you go to the podium and take a big drink before you go? Let me explain what we're going to be doing tonight. We've got a few pages of resolutions and ordinances which we'll be handling, and it essentially refers to changes that are made in the charter in terms of the reorganization that was completed. So we'll try to get through these things with due diligence, and at this time, I would like to ask anyone in the room that intends to speak on any of these resolutions to please stand and be sworn in.
If there's questions, should they be sworn in?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's cast of thousands.
If it's staff, though, I don't really need to.
We don't really need to?
Oh.
Okay. All right. Then we just...
Maybe they should be, then, for a public hearing.
If it's a hearing, we should. Okay. Everybody else.
That's a workout.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Okay, we will now open the public hearing for Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2017-1, deleting the reference to the Department of Public Works and replacing it with the Department of Infrastructure and Development, the Department of Waterworks, and the Department of Field Operations in Article 1, Section SC 1-19.
So moved.
Second.
We're just doing the public hearing now.
Aye.
Yeah, just... Is there any? No one wants to speak, because we didn't swear anybody in. Any comments from the group? No? Thank you. In which case, I'll close the public hearing now. I'll call for a motion in the second to approve Resolution Number 217-1.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Iarton, Mr. Bouda, Ms. Glanz.
Before you use Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2017-1, a resolution to amend the charter of the City of Salisbury, Maryland by deleting the reference to the Department of Public Works and replacing it with the Department of Infrastructure and Development, the Department of Waterworks, and the Department of Field Operations in Article 1, CS 1-19. Whereas the Department of Public Works is being divided into three separate departments, the Department of Infrastructure and Development, the Department of Waterworks, and the Department of Field Operations as part of the reorganization structure for the City of Salisbury. And whereas SC 1-19 of the current Salisbury City Charter refers to the Department of Public Works that will be eliminated under the reorganization and replaced with the Department of Infrastructure and Development, and the Department of Waterworks, and the Department of Field Operations, and whereas the Salisbury City Council has concluded that it is in the best interest of the city to amend the city charter to accomplish the reorganization plan, which will not result in increased costs under the city's current budget and will allow the city to operate in a more efficient manner.
Any questions? If not, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution Number 2017-1, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. We will now open the public hearing for Charter Amendment Resolution 2017-2, adding deputy city administrators and specifying a chain of command in Article 4, Section SC 4-1. I will now close the public hearing. I'll call for a motion now and a second to approve Resolution Number 217-2.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Iarton, Ms. Glanz.
Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2017-2, a resolution to amend the charter of the City of Salisbury, Maryland by adding deputy city administrators and specifying chain of command in Article 4, SC 4-1. I will now close the public hearing. I'll call for a motion now and a second to approve Resolution Number 217-2.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Iarton, Ms. Glanz.
Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2017-2, a resolution to amend the charter of the City of Salisbury, Maryland by adding deputy city administrators and specifying chain of command in Article 4, SC 4-1. Whereas there is currently an assistant city administrator for the city, which is being changed to two city administrators as part of the reorganization structure for the City of Salisbury. And whereas, under the current city charter, the city administrator shall be the immediate supervisor of each department head. And whereas, under the reorganization structure, the city administrator shall be the immediate supervisors of the department heads from the Department of Police and the Department of Fire, as well as the immediate supervisors of the mayor's office and the deputy city administrators. And whereas, under the reorganization structure, one deputy city administrator shall be the immediate supervisors of the department heads of the Department of Finance, Information Services, Human Resources, Business Development, and the Public Information Officer. And whereas, under the reorganization structure, one deputy city administrator shall be the immediate supervisor of the department heads of the Departments of Infrastructure and Development, Field Operations, Waterworks, Housing and Community Development, and Procurement. Whereas, Salisbury City Council has concluded that it is in the best interest of the city to amend the city charter to accomplish the reorganization plan, which will not result in increased costs under the city's current budget and will allow the city to operate in a more efficient manner.
I'll now call the vote. All those in favor of Charter Amendment Resolution Number 217-2, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. We will now open the public hearing for Charter Amendment Resolution Number 217-3, deleting the reference to Article 23A, Section 3A, and Section 5-1A, 38A, and replacing it with local government article, Section 6, 1-102. Does anyone want to speak? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing at this time. I will now entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2017-3.
So moved.
Mr. Iarton.
Second.
Ms. Jackson. Ms. Glanz.
Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2017-3, a resolution to amend the charter of the City of Salisbury, Maryland by deleting the reference to Article 23A, 3A, in SC 5-1A, 38A, and replacing it with local government article 6-102. Whereas the Annotated Code of Maryland is amended from time to time, and whereas the state of Maryland repealed and transferred all of Article 23A of the Annotated Code of Maryland, and whereas the current city charter contains references to the prior version, and whereas the Salisbury City Council desires to amend the city charter to update the references to the Annotated Code of Maryland.
I'll now call the vote on Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2017-3. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. We will now open the public hearing for Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2017-4, deleting references to the Department of Internal Services and replacing those references with the Department of Finance and deleting the references to the Director of Internal Services and replacing that position with the Director of Finance in Article 7, Sections SC 7-1, SC 7-2, SC 7-3, SC 7-15, SC 7-22, SC 7-25, SC 7-37, SC 7-738, SC 7-39, SC 7-40, SC 7-41, SC 7-42, and SC 7-46, D and F. At this time, I'll close the public hearing if there's no one wants to speak. I'll now call for a motion in the second to approve Resolution Number 2017-4.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Bouda, Ms. Jackson.
Can I just say ditto?
Can you? No.
Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2017-4, a resolution to amend the charter of the City of Salisbury, Maryland by deleting references to the Department of Internal Services and replacing those references with the Department of Finance and deleting references to the Director of Internal Services and replacing that position with the Director of Finance in Article 7. SC 7-1, SC 7-2, SC 7-3, SC 7-15, SC 7-22, SC 7-25, SC 7-37, SC 7-38, SC 7-39, SC 7-40, SC 7-41, SC 7-42, and SC 7-46, D and F. Whereas the Department of Internal Services is being divided into two separate departments, in the Department of Finance and the Department of Procurement as part of the reorganization structure for the City of Salisbury. And whereas, Article 7 of the current Salisbury City Charter refers to the Department of Internal Services that will be eliminated under the reorganization and replaced with the Department of Finance. And whereas, the Salisbury City Council has concluded that it is in the best interest of the city to amend the city charter to accomplish the reorganization plan, which will not result in increased costs under the city's current budget and will allow the city to operate in a more efficient manner.
I'll now call the vote for Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2017-4. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. And the chair votes aye. We will now open the public hearing for Charter Amendment Resolution 2017-5, deleting the reference to the Department of Public Works and replacing it with the Department of Field Operations and Department of Infrastructure and Development by renaming the bureau in Section SC-10-1B by changing the responsibility in SC-10-2, and by adding SC-10-3 and SC-10-4. No one wants to speak. I will now close the hearing. I'll now entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2017-5.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Iarton, Ms. Glanz.
Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2017-5, a resolution to amend the Article 10 in the Charter of the City of Salisbury, Maryland by deleting the reference to the Department of Public Works and replacing it with the Department of Field Operations and the Department of Infrastructure and Development by renaming the bureaus in SC-10-1B by changing the responsibilities in SC-10-2, and by adding SC-10-3 and SC-10-4. Whereas, the Department of Public Works is being divided into three separate departments, the Department of Infrastructure and Development, the Department of Waterworks, and the Department of Field Operations as part of the reorganization structure for the City of Salisbury. And whereas, the Department of Infrastructure and Development and the Department of Field Operations are each assuming different responsibilities in Article 10. And whereas, the Department of Waterworks will be assuming responsibilities in Article 12. And whereas, Article 10 of the current Salisbury City Charter refers to the Department of Public Works that will be eliminated under the reorganization and replaced with the Department of Infrastructure and Development, the Department of Waterworks, and the Department of Field Operations. And whereas, the Salisbury City Council has concluded that it is in the best interest of the city to amend the city charter to accomplish the reorganization plan, which will not result in increased costs under the city's current budget and will allow the city to operate in a much, in a more efficient manner.
I'll now call the vote. All those in favor of Charter Amendment Resolution-Number 217-5, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Mr. Council President.
Yes.
I'm going to let Deputy City Administrators, Kitzrow and Poulter finish these, if you don't mind. They're going to take the next two each. Get their feet wet.
Certainly. Doesn't seem fair. Good evening, Andy.
Good evening. On the job training.
I will. I will now open the public hearing for Charter Amendment Resolution 2017-6, deleting the reference to the Department of Public Works and replacing it with the Department of Infrastructure and Development in Article 11, Section SC-11-5 and SC-11-9. I will invite the public to speak. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. I want to entertain a motion to, and a second to approve Resolution Number 2017-6.
So moved.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson.
Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2017-6, a resolution to amend the charter of the City of Salisbury, Maryland by deleting the reference to the Department of Public Works and replacing it with the Department of Infrastructure and Development in Article 11, SC-11-5 and SC-11-9. Whereas, the Department of Public Works is being divided into three separate departments, the Department of Infrastructure and Development, the Department of Waterworks, and the Department of Field Operations as part of the reorganization structure for the City of Salisbury. And whereas, SC-11-5 and SC-11-9 of the current Salisbury City Charter refers to the Department of Public Works that will be eliminated under the reorganization and replaced with the Department of Infrastructure and Development. And whereas, the Salisbury City Council has concluded that this is in the best interest of the city to amend the city charter to accomplish the reorganization plan, which will not result in the increased costs under the city's current budget and will allow the city to operate in a more efficient manner.
I'll now call for the vote on Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2017-6. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Now open the public hearing for Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2017-7, deleting the reference to the Department of Public Works and replacing it with the Department of Waterworks in Article 12, Water Sewers and Garbage, SC-12-1, SC-12-2, SC-12-3, SC-12-4, SC-12-7, and SC-12-10. If anyone wants to speak? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion to, and a second to approve Resolution Number 2017-7.
So moved.
Mr. Rudisil. Mr. Boda, was that you? Okay.
Charter Amendment Resolution Number 210, sorry, 2017-7, a resolution to amend the charter of the City of Salisbury, Maryland by deleting the reference to the Department of Public Works and replacing it with the Department of Waterworks in Article 12, Water, Sewers, and Garbage, SC-12-1, SC-12-2, SC-12-3, SC-12-4, SC-12-7, and SC-12-10. Whereas, the Department of Public Works is being divided into three separate departments, the Department of Infrastructure and Development, the Department of Waterworks, and the Department of Field Operations, as part of the reorganization structure for the City of Salisbury. And whereas, Article 12 of the current Salisbury City Charter contains the Department of Public Works that will be eliminated under the reorganization and replaced with the Department of Infrastructure and Development. And whereas, Articles 12 of Charter controls the city's power to plan, construct, and maintain the water system and sewer system for the city. And whereas, the Salisbury City Council has concluded that that is in the best interest of the city to amend the city charter to accomplish the reorganization plan, which will not result in increased costs under the city's current budget and will allow the city to operate in a more efficient manner.
I'll now call the vote. All those in favor of Charter Resolution Number 2017-7, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We will now open the public hearing for Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2017-8, deleting references to the Department of Internal Services and Division of Procurement, and replacing those references with the Department of Procurement and deleting all references to the Director of Internal Services and deleting references to the Assistant Director of Internal Services/Procurement, and replacing those references with the Director of Procurement and correcting typographical errors in Article 16, Sections SC-16-1, SC-16-2, SC-16-3A, SC-16-5, SC-16-6, SC-16-7, SC-16-8, and SC-16-9, and replacing those with the Director of Finance in SC-16-10. Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. I'll now call for a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 2017-8.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson. Ms. Poulter.
Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2017-8, a resolution to amend the charter of the City of Salisbury, Maryland by deleting references to the Department of Internal Services and the Division of Procurement and replacing those references with the Department of Procurement and deleting all references to the Director of Internal Services, deleting references to the Assistant Director of Internal Services/Procurement, and replacing those references with the Director of Procurement and correcting typographical errors in Article 16, SC-16-1, SC-16-2, SC-16-3A, SC-16-5, SC-16-6, SC-16-7, SC-16-8, and SC-16-9, and replacing those with the Director of Finance in SC-16-10. Whereas, the Department of Internal Services is being divided into two separate departments, the Department of Finance and the Department of Procurement, as part of the reorganization structure for the City of Salisbury. And whereas, Article 16 of the current Salisbury City Charter refers to the Division of Procurement within the Department of Internal Services that will be eliminated under the reorganization and replaced with the Department of Procurement. And whereas, the Salisbury City Council has concluded that it is in the best interest of the city to amend the city charter to accomplish the reorganization plan, which will not result in increased costs under the city's current budget and will allow the city to operate in a more efficient manner.
I'll now call for the vote on Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2017-8. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We will now open the public hearing on Charter Amendment Resolution 2017-9, deleting references to Director of Internal Services and replacing that position with the Director of Finance in Article 20, Sections SC-20-1, SC-20-3, and SC-20-4. If there anyone wishes to speak? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. I'll now entertain a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 2017-9.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda.
Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2017-9, a resolution to amend the charter of the City of Salisbury, Maryland by deleting references to the Director of Internal Services and replacing that position with the Director of Finance in Article 20, SC-20-1, SC-20-3, and SC-20-4. Whereas, the Department of Internal Services is being divided into two separate departments, the Department of Finance and the Department of Procurement, as part of the reorganization structure of the City of Salisbury. And whereas, Article 20 of the current Salisbury City Charter refers to the Director of Internal Services that will be eliminated under the reorganization and replaced with the Director of Finance. And whereas, the Salisbury City Council has concluded that it is in the best interest of the city to amend the city charter to accomplish the reorganization plan, which will not result in increased costs under the city's current budget and will allow the city to operate in a more efficient manner.
I'll now call for the vote on Charter Amendment Resolution 2017-9. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The Charter Amendment public hearings are now completed. The remainder of the items were presented by City Attorney Mark Tillman. Did you bring water with you? Good. Good evening, Mr. Tillman.
Good evening.
I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2434 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson and Mr. Rudisil. Mr. Tillman.
This is an ordinance by the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury to amend the Salisbury City Code by deleting Chapter 8.32 Smoking and replacing it with a new chapter 8.32 Smoking, to prohibit smoking on, in, or around property owned, leased, or operated by the city, including public parks. This is the second reading. I read it in its entirety last time. If you don't mind, I'll skip that this time. There was one change made where the inch, you know, symbol was used, and that was changed to the word inches.
Inches.
And other than that, I think it remains as it was.
Any questions? All those in favor? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Chair votes aye. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2435 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson. Mr. Tillman.
This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 2018 General Fund to appropriate funds for a National Folk Festival event manager. This, again, is the second reading. It was read in its entirety. The only correction that was made at the last meeting was down under lines 29 and 30. The two figures needed to be reversed to match the whereas clauses, which are correct.
Questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance Number 2435 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2436 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson. Mr. Tillman.
Okay. This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury amending Title V Business Licenses and Regulations of the Salisbury Municipal Code to retitle Chapter 5.32 Hawkers, Peddlers, and Transient Merchants as Mobile Vendors. To refer to all activities of selling food or merchandise from a mobile vehicle, van, wagon, cart, boat, or movable structure as mobile vending. To move the enforcement of responsibilities of mobile vendors from the city clerk to the business development director and to create a new chapter titled Door-to-Door Solicitors. Whereas, Chapter 5.32 Hawkers, Peddlers, and Transient Merchants shall be re-titled Chapter 5.32 Mobile Vendors to update the chapter and refer to all such activities as mobile vending. And whereas, all references to city clerks shall be removed and replaced with business development director in Chapter 5.32 Mobile Vendors. And whereas, all references to door-to-door soliciting shall be removed from Chapter 5.32 Mobile Vendors, and a new chapter shall be added entitled Door-to-Door Solicitors to be enforced by the city clerk. And whereas, the office of the city clerk recommends approval of the proposed code changes now therefore being enacted or ordained by the city, by the council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, the Chapter 5.32 Hawkers, Peddlers, and Transient Merchants of the Salisbury Municipal Code is hereby amended, and Chapter 5.34 Door-to-Door Solicitors is added to the Salisbury Municipal Code as follows. First change under Chapter 5.32, there's a change to the title, deleting the words Hawkers, Peddlers, and adding Mobile Vendors. Under definitions, 5.32.10, excuse me, .010, the clerk is deleted on line 31, business development director is added in with the, also the words means the director of business development or his or her designee. The line 33 deletes Hawkers or Peddlers again and substitutes mobile vendor, which means any person, whether or not a city resident, who engages in the activities of hawking or peddling of food, services, or merchandise from a mobile vehicle, van, wagon, cart, boat, or other movable structure. Again, line 36, we remove Hawkers and Peddlers, substitute mobile vending. The definition will means the act of offering for sale and delivery of goods, wares, or merchandise, including but not limited to magazines, books, periodicals, food, and personal property of every nature on the public streets or in any other public place, including offering any of the aforementioned, above-mentioned, excuse me, items for sale, and delivery from any type of wagon, vehicle, boat, or other movable structure. The remainder of the definitions remain the same under that section. The under enforcement section, 5.32.020, the clerk is being eliminated and substituted as the business development director. Under 5.32.030, again, we're removing the words Hawkers and Peddlers, substituting mobile vendors, and that, again, appears in line 56. In line 60, the same change. Under 5.32.040, there is a change down in subsection B, and that is engaging in the delivery of goods, wares, or merchandise, and we're striking the words including but not limited to bread and bakery products, meat and meat products, or milk products. And in the substitution for those, we're saying to any person, so it would be delivery of goods, wares, or merchandise to any person who had previously ordered the same or was entitled to receive the same by reason of a prior agreement. Under subsection C, hawking and peddling is removed and substituting mobile vending. D, E, and F remain the same, as well as G and H. Then, under Section 5.32.050, again, substituting Hawkers and Peddlers and replacing it with mobile vendor, and the clerk is now replaced there also with business development director. The remainder of that section remains unchanged. Section 5.32.060, surety bond required. Again, Hawkers and Peddlers removed, mobile vendor substituted, clerk is removed, business development director substituted. Under Section 5.32.070, license fee, the fee amount is being changed from what was previously in there at $25, and it's now going to read $50. And again, clerk is exchanged for business development director. 5.32.080, again, substituting the title from clerk to business development director under A. Under B, the same changes are being made, including Hawkers and Peddlers replaced with mobile vendor. Again, the same change under subsection C, clerk is replaced with business development director. Section 5.32.090, the, it's, will begin in the words in the case of Hawkers and Peddlers, so it'll just begin with a license issued under this chapter or shall be good for one year, et cetera. So just the one deletion. Subsection C, Hawkers and Peddlers replaced with mobile vendor again. And subsection D, clerk is replaced with business development director. Section 5.32.100, the changes there, line 157, the expiration of the existing license file either an application for renewal by the clerk. expiration of the existing license file either in application for renewal by the clerk or confirm in writing that the information on the expiring application remains the same. And then the line one sixty, they're just adding or written request for renewal, it appears in that section. Under five point three two point one one zero, again substituting the title from clerk to Business Develop Director, same with B, but also doing Hawkers and Peddlers with Mobile Vendor. C, the same changes are appearing again. Next change, line one eighty, hawking and peddling removed, Mobile Vending substituted. And then in there, at the end on line one eighty-three, we're adding or by special permission from the Business Development Director. Prohibited areas, basically again substituting Hawkers or Peddlers with Mobile Vending. And I think that's, let's see, exceptions for the selling festival. So no, I don't, the rest of the changes there are just to make it, you know, clear what's happening. Line one ninety, except the mayor may grant exceptions or exemptions as part of a festival, fireman's muster, or other bona fide activity within the city park or by special permission. No changes, it looks like, under five point three two point one four oh, or five point three two point one five zero, or five point three two one six zero. And then the next is the section that's being added, and that section is pretty much following the same format. That is all being added. I'll be happy to read it if you'd like me to, but it's basically just to pull out that one element and put it, leave it with a clerk.
I think that's fine.
Okay. Basically, that's not changing, though. She'll still keep door-to-door sales.
Right. I would, I would like to make one clarification. We're not removing the clerk. You're okay. It's just the word clerk from the document. Come on, folks, this is gonna be a long night. Work with me.
And the other thing also, we raised a fee because there's some costs associated with background checks and processing.
Yes. That was discussed at work session.
Right. Okay. Call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two four three six for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two four three seven for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda. Mr. Tillman.
This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY two thousand eighteen general fund budget to appropriate the funds returned on a contract. Whereas the Police Department requires police officer recruits to enter into a five-year prorated contract prior to employment, whereas a police officer who did not meet the conditions of the contract reimbursed the city prorated amount of ten thousand dollars; and whereas the Salisbury Police Department requests that these funds be placed in our Policy Services Training Account two one zero two one dash five 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 oh four to offset the Police Academy training cost. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's fiscal year two thousand eighteen general fund budget be, and it's hereby amended as follows. Number one, increase the general fund revenue account oh one zero 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 dash four five six nine one one by ten thousand, and paragraph two, increase the Police Department budget by an equivalent amount.
Any questions? All those in favor of ordinance number two four three seven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two four three eight for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, this is. Ms. Jackson. Mr. Boda.
Ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY two thousand eighteen general fund budget to appropriate the funds returned on a contract. Whereas the Police Department requires police officer recruits to enter into a five-year prorated contract prior to employment, whereas a police officer who did not meet the conditions of the contract reimbursed the city a prorated amount of sixteen thousand; and whereas the Police Department requests that these funds be placed in their Police Services Training Account two one zero two one dash five 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 oh four to offset Police Academy training costs. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland. City's fiscal year two thousand eighteen general fund budget be, and it's hereby amended as follows. Increase current surplus account oh one zero 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 dash four six nine eight one zero by sixteen thousand, and increase the Police Department budget by an equivalent amount.
Any questions? Call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number two four three eight for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two four three nine for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson.
And so they begin.
And so we begin.
This is the continuation of the Charter Amendments that we discussed earlier. This is dealing with the code sections that are necessary to be changed in order to accomplish the reorganization. It's an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend the following sections of Title One General Provisions of the Salisbury Municipal Code, Chapter one point oh four Code Adoption, Section point two zero zero, and Chapter one point one six point one zero zero Waiver of Fines, Authority to Issue Citations, Violations and Penalties, Repealer, by updating the reference to Article twenty-three A with the current reference in the local government article, by deleting the references to the Department of Building Permitting Inspection and replacing it with the Department of Infrastructure and Development, deleting the reference to the Department of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance, and replacing it with the Housing and Community Development Department, deleting the references to Public Works, adding the Fire Marshal, and adding the Fire Prevention Code. Whereas the Mayor and Council of the City of Salisbury desire to reorganize the departmental structure of the City of Salisbury, and whereas the Department of Public Works is being divided into three separate departments, the Department of Infrastructure and Development, the Department of Waterworks, and the Department of Field Operations, as part of the reorganization structure for the City of Salisbury; and whereas the name of the Department of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance was previously changed to the Housing and Community Development Department, whereas the Fire Marshal is currently a part of the Department of Building Permitting and Inspections; and whereas the Fire Marshal will be part of the Fire Department as part of the reorganization structure, and whereas the Fire Marshal will have authority to issue fines and citations to enforce the Fire Prevention Code; and whereas the Salisbury City Council has concluded it is in the best interest of the city to amend the city code to accomplish the reorganization plan, which will not result in increased costs under the city's current budget, and will allow the departments to operate in a more efficient manner. Now therefore being enacted or ordained by the City of Salisbury, the Chapters one point oh four point two zero zero, and one point one six point one zero zero of the Salisbury City Municipal Code be amended as follows. Okay. Basically, again, you can see on lines forty-six, we're substituting the Article twenty-three reference for the more current reference. We're also deleting the Mayor and Council, and referring to the City of Salisbury. The Infrastructure and Civil Violation Section under subsection B, again, we're just taking out the outdated references to Building Permitting Inspection and substituting Infrastructure and Development, and the designee of the Director there. And again, the same is occurring down under subparagraph eleven, Director of Public Works is being eliminated, and the Director of the Department of Field Operations in the designee of the Director is added. And in twelve, Deputy Director of Public Works is being deleted, and in its place, Traffic Superintendent. Under paragraph thirteen, it's going to be the Operations and Maintenance Superintendent, the word supervisor comes out. And then the additions here are the Safety Manager in paragraph fifteen, and the Fire Marshal in paragraph seventeen. And those people will be able to issue citations in the future. The addition, other substantive addition is in subparagraph C, we're adding the City of Salisbury Fire Prevention Code as number eight. That's it.
Okay. Questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance number two four three nine for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two four four zero for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda.
It's an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend the following sections of Title Two Administration and Personnel of the Salisbury Municipal Code, Chapter two point oh four point oh six oh subsection A, Title Financial Disclosure dash Employees and Appointed Officials, Chapter two point one four Housing and Community Development Department, Chapter two point one eight Department of Information Technology, and Chapter two point two zero point oh two oh Human Resources Department, by deleting the reference to the Assistant City Administrator and replacing it with the references to the Deputy City Administrators, by adding the Building Code to the codes enforced by the Housing and Community Development Department, by deleting the references to Information Technology and replacing it with Information Services, and by deleting the word direct in front of the phrase supervision of the City Administrator, to amend Chapter two point three two Purchases and Sales by deleting the title Director of Internal Services and replacing it with the title Director of Procurement, and to amend Chapter two point four zero Disposition of Personal Property, Section point oh three oh, by deleting the title Director of Internal Services and replacing it with the title Director of Finance. Whereas the Mayor and Council of the City of Salisbury desire to reorganize the departmental structure of the city, and whereas the position of Assistant City Administrator is being changed to Deputy City Administrators as part of the reorganization, whereas under the reorganization structure, one Deputy City Administrator shall be immediate supervisor of the department heads from the Departments of Finance, Public Information Office, Information Services, Human Resources, and Business Development, whereas the other Deputy City Administrator shall be the immediate supervisor of the department heads from the Departments of Procurement, Housing and Community Development, Waterworks, Field Operations, Infrastructure and Development, whereas the Department of Building Permitting Inspections is being eliminated as part of the reorganization structure for the city; and whereas the responsibilities of this department for planning, permitting, and licensing will be handled by the newly-created Department of Infrastructure and Development; and whereas the responsibilities of this department for the enforcement of the Building Code will be handled by the Housing and Community Development Department; and whereas the Department of Information Technology is being given additional responsibilities, is being renamed as part of the reorganization structure of the City of Salisbury; and whereas the Geographic Information System, GIS, will now be part of the department; and whereas the Department of Internal Services is being divided into two separate departments, the Department of Finance and the Department of Procurement, as part of the reorganization structure for the City of Salisbury; and whereas Chapter two point three two of the current Salisbury City Code refers to the Director of Internal Services, that will be eliminated under the reorganization and replaced with the Director of Procurement; and whereas Chapter two point four zero of the current Salisbury Code refers to the Director of Internal Services, that will be eliminated under the reorganization and replaced with the Director of Finance; and whereas the City of Salisbury City Council has concluded it is in the best interest of the city to amend the city code to accomplish the reorganization plan, which will not result in increased costs under the city's current budget, and will allow the departments to operate in a more efficient manner. Now therefore be it enacted or ordained by the City of Salisbury, the Chapters two point oh four, two point one four, two point one eight, two point two oh, two point three two, and two point four oh of the Salisbury, of the City of Salisbury Municipal Code be amended as follows. The first section, two point oh four, is the ethics section, and we're replacing the reference there to City Administrator with Deputy City Administrators, plural. The, under two point one four point oh one oh, we're adding the building, fire, and building and fire to the already list of purposes for the Housing and Community Development Department, so that they will have the authority to enforce those as well. Powers and Duties of the Director of the Department, again, the, under two point one four point oh three oh, the word direct supervision of the city is eliminated because, in fact, they will be supervised under the authority of the mayor by the Assistant City Administrator. Or by the City Administrator, what am I saying? Again, the directly is taken out of the next section, line one oh six. Down under two point one four oh five oh, we're again adding in the words building, fire, to that section to include those as well. The Department of Information and Technology Services is being, the word technology is being eliminated. And then the rest, if you go through some of that, again, we're eliminating the word technology repeatedly. Again, the direct supervision comes out on line one forty. Technology is taken out, and then the next section's down, again, just the word technology is being removed. The numbers are, it's being renumbered in line one fifty-eight, and again, technology removed. Under the Human Resources Department, again, they had previously been referred to under the direct supervision, but that, there will now be a chain of command, including the Deputy City Administrators in there as well. So that's coming out. Let's see, what we got here? We got a date changing in line one eighty-five, then down in two point three two point oh two zero, the city purchases and sales will be controlled by the Director of Procurement now, instead of Internal Services. Again, that same language is being taken care of in lines two hundred and two oh one. Same thing is being done down in line two eleven. Same thing is being done in two nineteen, two two three, and again on two twenty-nine. And then, under the Procedures for Competitive Bidding, again, the Director of Procurement is going to handle that, so the references to Internal Services are being eliminated in subsections A and B. Again, the same result in subsection C. And then the further subsections that are, we go down to under one, and then the lowercase B, C, D, same changes are being made. Again, we're eliminating the reference to Internal Services. Continues on into lines three thirty-six and three thirty-seven, same changes. And they continue again under subsection D. So as you can see by the changes there, very few of the duties are actually changing, it's just the name and the person who would be responsible for it is changing. Under Emergency Services, two point three two point oh six zero, again, Internal Services is coming out, Procurement is going in. That appears in subsection B, C, and D. Two point three two point oh seven zero, again, Internal Services is coming out, the word Procurement is being added in multiple places. Same is happening with two point three two point oh eight zero, two point three two point oh nine zero, and two point three two point one hundred, and two point four oh point oh three zero, same changes. And that's it.
That's all.
All hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two four four zero for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two four four one for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson.
All right. As late as today, a few minor changes have been made in this section. I'm going to read this with the changes, as I previously discussed.
Okay.
With the President and Council. An ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend Chapter two point one two Department of Building Permitting and Inspections of the Salisbury City Code by deleting the references to Department of Building Permitting and Inspections and replacing those references with the Department of Infrastructure and Development, adding language to establish the responsibility of the Building Code enforcement by the Housing and Community Development Department, and adding the language for the review and oversight of fire lanes. Whereas the Mayor and Council of the City of Salisbury desire to reorganize the departmental structure of the City of Salisbury, and whereas the Department of Building Permitting and Inspections is being eliminated as part of the reorganization structure for the City of Salisbury; and whereas the responsibilities of this department for planning, permitting, and licensing will be handled by the newly-created Department of Infrastructure and Development; and whereas the responsibilities of this department for the enforcement of the Building Code after the completion of construction will be handled by the Housing and Community Development Department; whereas the Salisbury City Council has concluded it is in the best interest of the city to amend the city code to accomplish the reorganization plan, which will not result in increased costs under the city's current budget, and will allow the departments to operate in a more efficient manner. Now therefore be it enacted or ordained by the City of Salisbury, that Chapter two point one two of the City of Salisbury Municipal Code be amended as follows. Chapter two point one two, again, Building Permitting and Inspections is eliminated, the new department, Department of Infrastructure and Development. And again, the same changes appear in two point one, two point oh one oh, in two point one, two point oh two oh. Again, just the substitution of names. Under the Powers and Duties of the Director and Department, the, again, the word direct is coming out, so it'll read Authority of the Mayor and the Supervision of the City Administrator. Building Permitting and Inspections comes out. There's an addition- Building permitting and inspections comes out, there's an addition on line 61, which reads, "The city fire marshal shall report the results of the fire plan reviews and preoccupancy functions to the Director of the Department of Infrastructure and Development." And then, the next line, again, building permitting and inspections is eliminated, infrastructure and development is put in there. Under section 2.12.040, there was a last sentence to that paragraph, which has been eliminated, and the, again, the references to building permitting and inspections are replaced with infrastructure and development. Again, that occurs in 2.12.050, and the same changes are taking place in 2.12.060, and as well are occurring in 2.12.070. And that's it.
Okay. Questions? All those in favor of ordinance number 2441 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2442 for the first reading.
So moved.
Mr. Boda.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, you have special?
I like this one.
Okay, you like this one.
I like this one, yeah.
Okay, he likes this one, so.
The mayor and his wife.
Okay.
Ordinance 2442, an ordinance to the City of Salisbury to amend Chapter 2.16.020, Fire Department Organization, subsections A, B, F, G, H, and I of the Salisbury City Code by adding the positions of Deputy Fire Chief of Administrative Services and Fire Marshal to the department, and by deleting the references to the volunteer company number one, whereas the Mayor and Council of the City of Salisbury desired to reorganize the departmental structure of the City of Salisbury, and whereas the Department of Building Permits and Inspections is being eliminated as part of the reorganization structure of the City of Salisbury, and whereas the position of Fire Marshal will now be part of the Fire Department, and whereas the position of Fire, Deputy Fire Chief of Administrative Services is being added as a newly created position, and whereas the City of Salisbury Council has concluded it is in the best interest of the city to amend the city code to accomplish the reorganization plan, which will not result in increased costs under the current, under the city's current budget and will allow the departments to operate in a more efficient manner, now therefore be enacted and ordained by the City of Salisbury that Chapter 2.16 of the City of Salisbury Municipal Code be amended as follows. All right, under the Fire Department Organization, the first elimination is the elimination of the volunteer company Salisbury Fire Department, Inc., Company Number One, which was as a result of their resignation. The Fire Department shall have a sufficient number of career and voluntary personnel to effectively manage and efficiently manage Fire Department personnel and operations, including in the, what's being added there is the Deputy Fire Chief of Administrative Services career, and then we're renumbering what was already there under the Deputy Fire Chief of Operations, and then down below, a new paragraph six is being added to name the Fire Marshal career as an additional position, and the others are just being renumbered. Down on subsection F, we're adding a new paragraph 15, which basically is outlining the duties and responsibilities of the Fire Chief, and 15 will, reads that the chief will serve as the authority having jurisdiction over the City Fire Prevention Code, this authority may be delegated by the chief to the Fire Marshal, and that's the only change in that section. And then, we're taking out in subsection G, the reference to career, so the Deputy Fire Chief of Administrative Services is being substituted. Then, when we get down under subparagraph two, that's a, that is an addition, it will read that the Deputy Fire Chief of Operations or third-in-command after the Fire Chief, and the Deputy Fire Chief of Administrative Services when on duty in the absence of the Fire Chief, and the Deputy Fire Chief of Administrative Services shall assume all of the duties and responsibilities of the Fire Chief, and for the time being shall possess all the authority under the existing laws and regulations as have been laid down for the guidance and direction of the Fire Chief and Deputy Fire Chief of Administrative Services. The Deputy Fire Chief of Operations shall assist the Fire Chief in the day-to-day operations of the Fire Department, and shall be subject to the direction and control of the Fire Chief. The Deputy Fire Chief of Operations shall have primary responsibility for managing the coordination of activities, personnel, resources, and operations of the Fire Department. Subparagraph three is also being added, it will read, "The Deputy Fire Chief of Volunteer Services or fourth-in-command after the Fire Chief, and Deputy Fire Chief of Administrative Services and Deputy Chief of Operations when on duty in the absence of the Fire Chief, and Deputy Fire Chief of Administrative Services, Deputy Chief of Operations shall assume all of the duties and responsibilities of the Fire Chief, and for the time being shall possess all the authority under the existing laws and regulations as have been laid down for the guidance and directions of the Fire Chief and Deputy Fire Chief of Administrative Services and Deputy Chief of Operations. The Deputy Fire Chief of Volunteer Services shall assist the Fire Chief and other Deputy Fire Chiefs in the day-to-day operations of the Fire Department, and shall be subject to the direction and control of the Fire Chief. The Deputy Fire Chief Volunteer shall have primary responsibility for managing the volunteer component of the Fire Department." Subsection H is being added, it will read duties and responsibilities of the Fire Marshal. The Fire Marshal shall be a uniform firefighter, the Fire Marshal conducts plan reviews and performs preoccupancy inspections to enforce the City of Salisbury Fire Prevention Code, Section 8.11. The Fire Marshal under the authority of the Fire Chief is the, is the City of Salisbury's primary and key point of contact for the expertise and guidance on any and all fire prevention issues or concerns. The city Fire Marshal shall report the results of the fire plan reviews and preoccupancy functions to the Director of the Department of Infrastructure and Development. Then, when we get down into subsection I, we're just, again, deleting references to career and volunteer and adding in the Deputy Fire Chief of Administrative Services where appropriate. And that's it.
Okay. Questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2442 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2443 for the first reading.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson.
It's an ordinance to the City of Salisbury to amend the following sections of Title II, Revenue and Finance of the Salisbury Municipal Code, Chapter 3.04, Claims for Refunds, Sections .030, .040, and .050. Chapter 3.08, Personal Property Taxes, Sections .010 and .020. Chapter 3.20, .020D, Tax Abatement, and Chapter 3.22, Advanced Telecommunication Systems Property Tax Credit, by deleting the title Director of Internal Services and replacing it with the title Director of Finance, by deleting the title Director of Information Technology and replacing it with the title Director of Information Services, and update the references to the current annotated code of Maryland. Whereas the Mayor and Council of the City of Salisbury desired to reorganize the departmental structure of the City of Salisbury, and whereas the Department of Internal Services is being divided into two separate departments, Department of Finance and Department of Procurement is part of the reorganization structure for the City of Salisbury, and whereas the current city code refers to the Director of Internal Services, that will be eliminated under the reorganization and replaced with the Director of Finance and Directors of Finance and Procurement, and whereas the Department of Information Technology is being given additional responsibilities and is being renamed as part of the reorganization structure for the City of Salisbury, and whereas the current city code contains the Director of Information Technology in Chapter 3.22 that will be renamed under the reorganization and replaced with Director of Information Services. And whereas the Salisbury City Council has concluded it is in the best interest of the city to amend the city code to accomplish the reorganization, which will not result in increased costs under the current city budget and will allow the departments to operate in a more efficient manner, now therefore be enacted and ordained by the City of Salisbury that Chapters 3.04, 3.08, 3.20, and 3.22 of the City of Salisbury Municipal Code be amended as follows. And again, 3.04.030, just taking out the references to internal services and substituting finance where appropriate, same with the next section 040, and the same with the next section 050. Under Personal Property Taxes, again, eliminating references to internal services and substituting Director of Finance. Under 3.08.010, they're referring to the, to the tax of property article, and we're eliminating certain sections there and substituting it with 10.210 of the annotated code. And updating the year of the volumes as, that were previously in the code. Again, replacing in line 72, Internal Services with Finance, and then down in line 74, more references to the current code, and line 79, more references to the current code, line 87, again, Internal Services eliminated, Finance put in, pursuant, again, under line 89, the same thing, updating to the current code sections. And then, in subsection D, eliminating Internal Services, substituting Finance. The, under definition, subsection D, there is a change, again, eliminating the Department of Information, the technology is being replaced to just Department of Information Services. Next change is in subsection D, again, substituting the correct name for the Director of Department of Information, and the next change, that's it?
That's it.
For that section. We're good.
Questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance number 2443 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2444 for the first reading.
So moved.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Rudisil.
Okay. It's an ordinance to the City of Salisbury to amend the following sections of Title V, Business Licenses and Regulations of the Salisbury Municipal Code, checked for 5.24.020A, Coin-Operated Machines, and in Chapter 5.64, Towing Companies, Sections .020, .030, .040, .090, and .100A, and .120A, by deleting the title Director of Internal Services and replacing it with a Director of Finance. The whereas clauses here are pretty much the same as the last one, I won't even repeat it, we, where the new finance director is being substituted for the old name, that, that occurs in subsection A of 5.24.020, that, and then, again, we're just substituting the department name in line 49, line 54, line 67, line 102, line 107, line 108, continuing down to line 127, continuing over to line 137, the same change, and 163. And that's it.
Questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number 2444 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2445 for the first reading.
So moved.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson.
An ordinance to the City of Salisbury to amend the following sections of Title VI, Animals of the Salisbury Municipal Code, Chapter 6.04, Dogs, Fowl, and Other Animals, Section .050B, and Chapter 6.05, Urban Chickens, Section .150A, by deleting the reference to the Neighborhood Services and adding the Housing and Community Development Department, and to correct the typographical error. Whereas the Mayor and Council of the City of Salisbury desired to reorganize the departmental structure of the City of Salisbury, and whereas the name of the Department of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance was previously changed to the Housing and Community Development Department, and whereas the name was not changed in all the sections of the Salisbury Municipal Code, and whereas the Salisbury City Council has concluded it is in the best interest of the city to amend the city code to accomplish the reorganization plan, which will not result in increased costs under the city's current budget and will allow the departments to operate in a more efficient manner, now therefore be enacted and ordained by the City of Salisbury that Chapters 6.04 and 6.05 of the City of Salisbury Municipal Code be amended as follows. Line 30 there, you can see there's just correcting what was a type O from fall to fail. And then, the reorganizational change would be under 6.04.150, line 45, the Animal Control Officer, or, and it reads Code Compliance Officer, and what we deleted was Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance, so it's just referring to the Code Compliance Officer, may issue violations and fines for those penalties.
Questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number 2445 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2446 for the first reading.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Rudisil.
Okay. All right. This is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury to amend the following sections of Title V, Health and Safety of the Salisbury Municipal Code, Chapter 8.04, Alarms, Sections .020, .030, and .050C and D. Chapter 8.08, Brush Weeds and Obnoxious Growth, Sections .030, .050, .060, and .070. Chapter 8.09, Tree and Plant Growth Trimming and Removal, Sections .030, .060, .070, and .080. Chapter 8.10, Dead or Damaged Trees, Sections .030, .060, .070, and .080. Chapter 8.16, Garbage, Yard Waste, and Refuge, Sections .020, .060B. Subsection I, .080B, and .090, and .100, subsection C. Chapter 8.20, Noise, Section .020. Again, is that I? It is? Okay. I think I need my new glasses on. Okay, .020I, by deleting the reference to the Neighborhood Services and Code, Services and adding the Housing and Community Development Department, by deleting the reference to the Build, Building Permitting and Inspections and replacing it with the Department of Infrastructure and Development, Chapter 8.24. Nuisance, Sections .010, and Chapter 8.28, Abandoned Refrigerators, Section .020, by deleting the reference to the Public Works and replacing it with the Field Operations, and by deleting the title Director of Internal Services and replacing it with the title Director of Finance. Whereas the Mayor and Council of the City of Salisbury desired to reorganize departmental structure of the City of Salisbury, and whereas the Department of Public Works is being divided into three separate departments, the Department of Infrastructure and Development, the Department of Public Works, and the Department of Field Operations, as part of the reorganization structure for the City of Salisbury, and whereas the name of the Department of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance was previously changed to the Housing and Community Development Department, and whereas the name was not changed in all the sections of Salisbury Municipal Code, and whereas the Department of Internal Services is being divided into two separate departments, the Department of Finance and the Department of Procurement is part of the reorganization structure for the City of Salisbury, and whereas the Salisbury City Council has concluded it is in the best interest of the city to amend the city code to accomplish the reorganization plan, which will not result in increased costs under the city's current budget and will allow the departments to operate in a more efficient manner, now therefore be enacted and ordained by the City of Salisbury that Chapters 8.04, 8.08, 8.09, 8.10, 8.16, 8.20, 8.24, and 8.28 of the Salisbury Municipal Code be amended as follows. And again, in subsections A and D, we're just substituting Internal Services for, eliminating those words and putting Finance in there. Again, under 8.04.030, under False Alarms, the same thing is occurring, except in addition, we're replacing internal, excuse me, replacing Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance with Housing and Community Development Department. Subsection D, again, Internal Services is being changed, and then, under 8.08, Brush Weeds and Obnoxious Growth, it's being relettered with A being eliminated, and we're beginning with 8.08.0301, and it sets forth the requirements, but the only changes here are, again, changing the Department of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance to Housing and Community Development Department. Other than that, it remains the same. Same for Section 8.08.050, and the same for Section 8.08.060. There's another reference to Internal Services there, down on line 171, that's being changed, but other than that, it's the same. And again, in Fin, Internal Services is being changed to Finance in line 180, and then, under the Appeal Section, 8.08.070, Department of Neighborhood Services is being eliminated and changed to Housing and Community Development. That's that, for that section. The 8.09, Trees and Plant Growth Trimming and Removal, again, Department of Neighborhood Services is changed to Housing and Community Development. Under 8. Under eight-point-oh-nine, point-oh-seven-oh, the same changes, with the addition of, down in line two-fifty-nine, Internal Services is being changed to Finance. Again, in two-six-four, on line two-six-four, substituting Housing and Community Development, and two-six-six, substituting Finance. And that continues over with subsections A, B, and C on the next page, correcting the names of the departments. Under line two-ninety-two, we're eliminating, again, the subsection A, and it's just going to be the numbered paragraphs after that, again, changing the names of the departments. And those department names are the only thing that changes until we get down to Garbage, Yard Waste, and Refuge, and there, it's different departments there, it's Public Works is being eliminated, Field Operations is being substituted, and that occurs in subsection A, B, C, and D, as well as in subsection F. Under section eight-point-one-six, point-oh-six-zero, again, substituting the new Field Operations, and substituting Department of Finance for Internal Services where it appeal, where it appears, and that's in B and I. Penalties and violations, all we're doing there is changing the name of the department to fi-, to the correct new name of Finance. And eight-point-one-six, point-oh-nine-zero, we're changing Public Works to Field Operations under subsection C, under subsection D, and under subsection E, Internal Services is being changed to Finance. And under Recycling, we're just changing, again, Public Works to Field Operations. Under Noise, eight-point-two-oh, point-oh-two-zero, in that section, the former Department of Building Permitting and Inspections is being changed to Infrastructure and Development under I. Eight-point-two-four, under Nuisance, we are changing under subparaphrase four, Building Permitting and Inspections is becoming Infrastructure and Development, Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance is becoming Housing and Community Development. And, let's see, again, Building Permitting is, again, changing to Infrastructure and Development down in line five-one-five, and Neighborhood Services to Housing and Community Development in line five-one-six, and then the same things are repeated in five-two-three and five-two-four, and down in five-two-eight and five-two-nine and five-thirty. Under Abandoned Refrigerators Enforcement, eight-point-two-eight, point-oh-two-zero, again, we're substituting Department of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance is being eliminated and substituted Housing and Community Development, and that is it.
Questions?
Yeah, on chapter eight-point-oh-eight, Brush Weeds and Obnoxious Growth, that's not any reference to my beard, is it?
My wife might say that, but I like beards.
You want to vote?
You might abstain?
You're going to lose.
No, we better not do that. Okay. Just, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number two-four-four-six for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Entertained a motion to approve ordinance number two-four-four-seven for the first reading.
So moved.
Seconded.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Rudicil?
This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend chapter eight-point-one-one, the Fire Prevention Code, sections point-oh-two-oh and oh-three-oh of the Salisbury City Code, by updating the reference to the National Fire Code and adding new sections, point-oh-three-oh and point-oh-five-oh, to add the jurisdiction and authority to inspect for compliance with the Fire Prevention Code, and adding language to establish dual responsibility for the Fire Prevention Code, whereas the Mayor and Council of the City of Salisbury desired to reorganize departmental structure of the City of Salisbury, and whereas the City of Salisbury adopts the State Fire Prevention Code with local amendments, and whereas there have been updates to the Fire Prevention Code, and whereas the Fire Marshal for the City of Salisbury will now be part of the Salisbury Fire Department, and whereas the Salisbury City Council desires to update Salisbury Municipal Code to reflect the updated Fire Prevention Code with local amendments, and whereas the City of, the Salisbury City Council has concluded it is in the best interest of the city to amend the city code to accomplish the reorganization plan, which will not result in increased cost under the city's current budget, and will allow the departments to operate in a more efficient manner, now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the City of Salisbury, that chapter eight-point-one-one of the City of Salisbury Municipal Code be amended as follows. And the reference there in eight-point-one-one, point-two-zero to the NFPA is being deleted, and the new language will read, "The National Fire Protection Association Life Safety Code One-O-One, as referenced, comma, amended and promulgated by the State Fire Prevention Commission, is adopted by the City of Salisbury with the following local amendments. In paragraph one, fire prevention fees shall be established by resolution of the City Council." Subsection B, again, the reference to the NFPA is being eliminated, the language there should read, "The National Fire Protection Association Fire Code One, as referenced, amended and promulgated by the State Fire Prevention Commission, is adopted by the City of Salisbury with the following local amendments." And then, the, there's no changes in one, two, and three, under subsection four, there is a deletion of the amend, section ten-point-one-one, open flame candles, et cetera, and an addition of the words, "Include Annex E, Firefighter Safety Building Marking System with Local Amendments." And under subsection A, Local Amendments, the Annex FR, under subsection I, we'll add E-one-point-three, point-six, point-one, and it, which reads, "The following letter shall be used to indicate special hazards assigned to the center of the Maltese Cross." Subparagraph one, the letter F, floor hazard, subparagraph two, the letter R, roof hazard, subparagraph three, the letter W, wall hazard, subparagraph four, the letter H, for holes in structure, five, S, for stairs compromised, and six, M, for maze-like confusing layout." Under subsection double-I, add E-one-point-three, point-six, point-two, where the AHJ determines the conditions to be severe enough to limit all operational activities to a defensive mode, only a red X shall be placed through the center section of the Maltese Cross. And then, we're taking out the year under subsection C for the reference to the International Building Code, and it will be adopted, as adopted with the state and local amendments. Subsection eight-point-one-one, point-oh-three-oh, the word setbacks is coming out, and we're adding authority having jurisdiction. Then, under that, we're eliminating outside of above-ground unprotected flammable liquid storage, that section, and adding that the chief of the fire department, paren C-O-F, shall serve as the authority having jurisdiction over the Fire Prevention Code. And then, under eight-point-one-one, point-oh-four-zero, inspections, subparagraph A, "To the full extent permitted by law, the fire department and the Housing and Community Development Department shall have authority to enter and examine at all reasonable times any building, structure, marine vessel, vehicle, or premises for the purpose of making fire safety inspections, with the exception of one and two family dwelling units." Subparagraph B is being added, "Personnel responsible for administering and enforcing this code shall be trained to a minimum level of Fire Inspector One in accordance with the National Fire, in accordance with the National Fire Protection." Not sure about that. Check on that. And then subsection C, "Personnel will periodically inspect all buildings and structures as herein set forth in this code on a schedule derived from life safety and fire risk assessment." And then, under eight-point-one-one, point-oh-five-oh, setbacks, it will read, "Outside above-ground unprotected flammable liquid storage tanks shall be separated from lot lines and public ways by a minimum of seventy-five feet." And then, under eight-point-one-one, point-oh-six-zero, those paragraphs are being eliminated and consolidated into two paragraphs, which I will read as follows. "When conducting plan review and preoccupancy inspections, the Wycomico County Department of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development- Dash Fire Protection Division shall have authority to enforce this code when requested to do so by and in coordination with the Director of the Department of Infrastructure and Development. In paragraph two, when conducting post-occupancy inspections, the Wycomico County Department of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development- Dash Fire Protection Division shall have authority to enforce this code in coordination with the Director of the Department of Housing and Community Development." And that is that.
Questions?
I just have one. On line one-oh-two, when you're talking about a minimum of seventy-five feet for flammable liquid storage tanks, what if the lot is smaller? I don't know if that's something...
I don't think that section changed, it just got, the numbering got moved.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't know that we looked at that. Good.
I mean, that's something, if you, like, you know, in my neighborhood, there's not seventy-five feet between my house and the two houses beside me, and the one behind me. So, that's something we've ever...
We'll look into that.
Yeah.
Good point. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two-four-four-seven for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Entertained a motion to approve ordinance number two-four-four-eight for the first reading.
So moved. Seconded.
Mr. Boda? Mr. Rudicil?
It's an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend the following sections of Title Ten, Vehicles and Traffic of the Salisbury Municipal Code, chapter ten-point-oh-four, General Provisions, sections point-oh-five-oh, point-oh-seven-oh, and point-oh-eight-oh, chapter ten-point-oh-eight, General Traffic and Regulation, section point-oh-two-oh-B, chapter ten-point-two-four, Parking Meters, sections point-oh-five-oh and point-oh-six-oh, chapter ten-point-two-eight, Parking Restrictions in Residential Districts, section point-oh-one-oh-A-three, and chapter ten-point-four-zero, Removal and Empowerment of Vehicles, section point-oh-eight-oh, by deleting the references to Internal Services and replacing those references with Finance, and to correct the typographical error. If you, again, substituting the, the same departments here. So, under ten-point-oh-four-point-oh-five-oh, we're just taking away Internal Services and replacing it with Finance. Same is being done under ten-point-oh-four-point-oh-seven-oh. Same is being done under ten-oh-four-point-oh-eight-oh. Under ten-point-oh-eight, point-oh-two-oh, we're taking out the reference to Article fifty-two and substituting Courts and Judicial Proceedings, Article seven-dash-three-oh-two. And again, down in line seventy-two and seventy-three, Internal Services comes out, Finance goes in. The same corrections with Internal Services and Finance in lines eighty-five and eighty-six. Same in line one-oh-one. And then, under Notices of Restricted Park, Parking, Issuance of Permits, we're just relettering, you know, the bolder stuff comes out at the top, and they are being relettered, so it'll be A, B, C, and D now. Other than that, there's no change. Department of Internal Services comes out in line one-eighteen, one-twenty, one-twenty-one, all substituted with Finance. And then, down here, we'll sign a Vehicle Release Form Authorizing, instead of authorized, which was the typographical error referred to in the title. And that's it.
Questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number two-four-four-eight for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Entertained a motion to approve ordinance number two-four-four-nine for the first reading.
So moved.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Boda? You want some more? Do you need a break? Mr. Tillman?
I think I have a hidden stash under here, thanks, too.
Oh. Do you need a break?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Just needed to wet my tongue again.
I'm tired, and I'm just listening.
Thank you.
An ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend the following sections of Title Twelve, Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places of the Salisbury Municipal Code, chapter twelve-point-oh-eight, Construction of Driveways, sections point-oh-one-oh, and point-oh-five-oh, chapter twelve-point-one-zero, Snow and Ice Removal, sections point-oh-four-oh, point-oh-five-oh, and point-oh-six-oh, chapter twelve-point-one-two, point-oh-one-oh, Excavations and Obstructions, chapter twelve-point-three-six, Sidewalk Cafes, sections point-oh-two-oh-B, and oh-four-oh-C, and G, and chapter twelve-point-four-zero, Sidewalk Signs, sections point-oh-two-oh-B, and point-oh-four-oh, by deleting Public Works and replacing those references with the Department of Infrastructure and Development, by deleting the reference to the Director of Building Permitting and Inspections, and replacing it with the Director of Infrastructure and Development, by deleting the reference to Neighborhood Services and adding the Housing and Community Development Department, and by deleting the title Director of Internal Services and replacing it with the title Director of Finance. Again, I, I won't even read the whereas clauses, because it's just substituting for changes of names.
Yep.
And those changes are, appear in line fifty-four, in line sixty, in both places, Public Works is being replaced with Department of Infrastructure and Development. They appear in line sixty-nine and seventy, replacing Department of Neighborhood Services with Housing and Community Development, or, yes. And they also appear with the changes in the department names in line seventy-five, seventy-nine, and eighty, as well as eighty-four and eighty-five. And then eighty-six, we're substituting Internal Services, is being replaced with Finance. And lines ninety-one and ninety-three, the same department changes are being made, and it's also occurring in line ninety-nine, one-oh-two, one-oh-nine. Public Works is being replaced with the Department of Infrastructure and Development in one-twenty-five, and down in lines one-thirty-two and one-thirty-three, Building and Permitting and Inspections is being replaced with Infrastructure and Development. Line one-forty-four, Public Works, replaced with Infrastructure and Development, same is occurring in line one-fifty-two, and in lines one-fifty-eight and fifty-nine, and also in line one-sixty-six, one-sixty-eight, and one-seventy-two. And that's that.
Questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number two-four-four-nine for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Entertained a motion to approve ordinance number two-four-five-zero for the first reading.
So moved.
Seconded.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Boda?
It's an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend the following sections of Title Twelve, Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places of the Salisbury Municipal Code, chapter twelve-point-three-two, Pedestrian Malls, by deleting the references to the Director of Public Works in sections point-oh-three-oh and point-oh-four-oh, and replacing with the Director of Infrastructure and Development, by deleting the references to Department of Public Works in section point-oh-six-oh, and replacing it with the Director of Field Operations, and by deleting the Director of the Department of Building Permitting and Inspections, and the Director of the Department of Building, Housing, and Zoning, and replacing both of those positions with the Director of the Department of Infrastructure and Development. Again, we're, you know, shifting, renaming, and shifting the responsibility, and the first changes are occurring. Down in line forty-one, Public Works has changed to Infrastructure and Development. That is also occurring in line fifty. Line sixty-one, Public Works is being changed to Field Operations, and in line sixty-two and sixty-three, Building Permitting has changed to Infrastructure and Development. Line seventy-seven, and line seventy-nine, Building, Housing, and Zoning are being changed to Infrastructure and Development.
Questions?
And that's that.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number two-four-five-zero for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Entertained a motion to approve ordinance number two-four-five-one for the first reading.
So moved.
Seconded.
Mr. Boda? Ms. Jackson?
Okay. An ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend the following sections, Title Thirteen, Public Services of the Salisbury Municipal Code, chapter thirteen-point-oh-one, point-oh-three-oh, Definitions, chapter thirteen-point-oh-two, General Provisions, Connection to the City's Water and Sewer Main, sections point-oh-five-oh-A-three, B-one, section point-oh-six-oh-G, point-oh-seven-oh-A-five, section A thirteen, B-three, B-seven, B-nine, B-ten, D-four, D, subsection E, and point-oh-eight-oh-G, chapter thirteen-point-two-oh, Private Water Systems, sections point-oh-two-oh-D and F, chapter- Chapter thirteen point two eight, Storm Water Management, Sections point oh one oh, point two one A and B, Point oh four oh, point oh five oh, point oh six oh, point oh seven oh, point oh nine oh, and, um, let's see, but point oh nine oh appears there twice, so I want to make sure we've got that correct. And thirteen point three zero, Storm Water Utility, Sections point oh one oh, point oh two oh C, point oh four oh L, Section point oh six oh D, subsection G, point oh seven oh A, point oh eight oh B, and point oh nine oh B, and Sections E and F, and point one one A, by deleting the references to Department of Building, Housing, and Zoning, and replacing those references with the Department of Infrastructure and Development, by deleting the references to Public Works and replacing those with Infrastructure and Development, and by deleting the references to Internal Services and replacing those reference with Finance, and by renumbering the sections to be consistent with the subsection numbering system used in the rest of the code, and by correcting the misnumbering of subsections thirteen point one three zero, point one one oh, to thirteen point three zero, point one one oh, and to correct typographical errors. Again, the reason for all of this is the restructuring. And just going through it quickly, definitions under that, thirteen point oh one oh, point oh three oh, Salisbury Public Works is being changed to Department of Infrastructure and Development. That's also occurring in line fifty-six. That's occurring in line sixty-four. And that's, Internal Services is being changed to Finance in line sixty-seven. Public Works is being deleted, Infrastructure and Development added in line ninety-two, and line one oh one. It's also being eliminated and replaced with Infrastructure and Development in lines one twenty and one twenty-one. And Public Works is being replaced with an agreement, it's going to be the execution of the development agreement instead of the Public Works Development Agreement. And that's in line one twenty-nine. And again, Public Works is eliminated in one thirty-three and one thirty-six. And Infrastructure and Development is substituted on line one thirty-seven. And Public Works is eliminated again on one thirty-eight. It's being eliminated and replaced with Infrastructure and Development on one fifty-six, one sixty-four, and one, line one seventy-five. It's also being replaced on, Public Works is being replaced on line one eighty-seven. One eighty-eight and eighty-nine, Salisbury Public Works is being replaced with the Department of Infrastructure and Development. The same changes are occurring in line one ninety-four, line two oh five, and two oh six. And Salisbury Public Works is coming out in two oh nine, and being replaced with the Department of Infrastructure and Development in lines two oh nine and two ten. Down under thirteen point oh two point oh eight zero, Salisbury Public Works comes out, Department of Infrastructure and Development goes in in two twenty-two and two twenty-three. And under thirteen point two, Private Water Works, again, taking out Department of Building and Housing and substituting Department of Infrastructure and Development. Subsection F, again, same change in a couple of places there. Storm Water Management, thirteen point two eight. The change there occurs in line two seventy-one. Public Works comes out, Infrastructure and Development goes in. Under the subsection thirteen point two eight, point oh two one, same change, Public Works is eliminated, Infrastructure and Development goes in in lines two eighty and two eighty-one. Also, in lines two eighty-seven and two eighty-eight. And in line two ninety-three, and three oh two, and lines three one three and three one four. The remainder of those sections are as they currently appear. In lines three twenty-one, Department of Public Works, Public Works comes out, Infrastructure and Development goes in. And then, the renumbering is occurring under thirteen point two eight, point oh four oh. And that is being, so it's going to begin with subsection A, Scope, and then it'll be, instead of the numbered sections, which were inconsistent with the code, it's going to be A, B, C, within subsections numbered there below under subsection B. And those are, the renumbering is the only sec, only real changes there.
I'm good with that.
And it keeps, and it keeps going for pages.
It's eleven hundred lines in this one particular thing.
Keeps going. We, we, we attempted in, in doing this not to make these kinds of changes in the code unless it was a section that was already being changed. And so we, where we changed it, we fixed it, so. And that, like I said, the renumbering just keeps going, so. See if there's any other.
I think that's fine. I do have, believe it or not, I do have a question.
Sure.
I apologize. In, in the summary sheet I have, under the Storm Water Utility, it says Section point oh one oh, point oh two oh C, and point oh four oh one, and then here it says L, point oh four oh L. Is L cor, I'm assuming L is correct?
Can you read me that whole number again? Where did, what's the?
Under the Storm Water Utility Sections, in the first line, I'll tell you what line it's on. Line ten.
Okay, so it's in the title.
It's in the ti, yeah.
Yeah.
It says Storm Water Utility Sections, point oh one oh, point oh two oh C.
So thirteen point three.
And it says point oh four oh L.
Let me look.
But on my summary sheet that I have, it says point oh four oh one. I'm assuming L is right because it's on the ordinance, but.
Yeah.
Am I, am I right, or? I just want to make sure we have it right this time, so we don't have to read it again.
Thirteen point three.
You see that?
Yeah, I've, I've got it, there's so many pages here, I've got to flip to thirteen point three.
Ms. Nick, would you see where?
It's a lowercase L.
Yes, a lowercase L on here.
On your sheet.
On my sheet? It looks like a one.
Oh two oh C is, the C is lowercase, and oh four oh.
It's a uppercase.
L, but on his sheet, it's a lowercase.
It's on ours, too.
Wait a minute. Point three zero.
It's on the sheet.
Okay. It's an L.
Yes, it is an L, I finally got there.
Okay.
I think it's line nine ninety-one, if I understand.
Okay. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, I think we were done, actually.
We're done, oh, good.
You know, there's, again, there's a couple more references later in there.
But it's all named.
To Internal Services and Finance, but that's it.
Okay.
Nothing else.
All right, any questions besides mine?
No.
Okay, good. All, all those in favor of ordinance number two four five one for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two four five two for the first reading.
So moved.
Seconded.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda.
An ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend the following sections, Title thirteen, Public Services of the Salisbury Municipal Code, Chapter thirteen point oh four, General Provisions, Water and Sewer Charges, by deleting the references to Public Works and Building Permitting Inspections in Sections point oh one oh, point oh three oh, point oh four oh, and point one one oh, and replacing those references with Infrastructure and Development, by deleting the references to Public Works in Sections point oh three oh, point oh six oh, and point one zero zero, and replacing with Water Works, by deleting the reference to Internal Services in Section point oh eight oh, and replacing those references with Finance, by deleting the reference to Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance in Section point one one oh, and replacing it with the Housing and Community Development Department, and by deleting the position of Director of Planning and Zoning in Section point one one oh, and replacing it with City Planner. Again, I, I mean, I won't do read, I'll delete the whereas clauses here, which are kind of repetitive. So, we're, we're substituting Public Works, will be eliminated, Infrastructure and Development added. I see that those are the changes that appear in the first page and a half, and we're substituting Building Permitting Inspections with Infrastructure and Development later on that page. If you continue on to page three, Public Works is replaced with Water Works. Repeatedly, Internal Services is replaced with Finance. Page four, Public Works with Water Works, again, repeatedly down that page. Public Works is replaced with Water Works on page five, repeatedly down the page. And then, down at the, under thirteen point oh four point one one oh, Public Works is replaced with Infrastructure and Development. And then, on page six, Building Permits and Inspection is replaced with Infrastructure and Development. Neighborhood Services is replaced with the Housing and Community Development Department, and Director of Planning and Zoning is replaced with the City Planner there on lines two thirty-eight and two thirty-nine. The next change appears down under subsection C, Public Works is Infrastructure and Development. And again, if Public Works becomes Infrastructure and Development, think throughout the rest of that page. Page seven is the end of that.
That's it?
I have one.
Uh huh.
A typographical error on line twelve.
Twelve?
Compliance. Let me make amendment.
What's the, one twelve? You said twelve or one twelve?
Line twelve.
Line twelve.
Compliance.
Let me get there.
Yep.
Seconded.
Thank you.
So we have a motion to amend line twelve to read as what?
Compliance.
Changing.
Changing.
Fixing the spelling.
Fixing the typographical error.
The two letters are, are reversed.
Switching. Spelling change.
Typographical.
Typographical, okay. All right, we have a motion to amend, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Now we'll vote on the amendment. All those in favor of ordinance number two four five two, as amended, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the Chair votes aye. Is the ear on?
No.
I hear it.
You hear it?
You hear something.
Okay.
They're getting shorter.
I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two four five three for the first reading.
So moved.
Seconded.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda.
It's an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend the following sections, Title thirteen, Public Services of the Salisbury Municipal Code, Chapter thirteen point oh oh eight, Water, by deleting the references to Public Works, City Engineer and Building Permitting and Inspections in Sections point oh six oh, point oh five oh, and point one one zero, and point one one zero, well, point one zero zero, and point one one zero, and replacing those references with the Infrastructure and Development, by deleting the references to Director of Public Works and City Engineer in Sections point oh one oh D and point oh three oh, and replacing those references with the Director of Water Works, and by deleting the reference to the Internal Services in Section point oh four oh, and replacing with Finance. Again, it's all about substituting the names. And under thirteen point oh eight point oh one oh, Public Works becomes Water Works. City Engineer becomes Director of Water Works. And Internal Services becomes Finance, down under subsection A. And in thirteen point oh eight point oh five oh, City Engineer becomes Director of Infrastructure and Development in that case. And Building Permits and Inspections in the City Engineer is deleted and becomes Infrastructure and Development. Under thirteen point oh eight point oh six zero, Public Works becomes Department of Infrastructure and Development. Public Works on subsection B, the same thing there. And under thirteen point oh eight point one hundred, Building Permits and Inspections becomes Infrastructure and Development. And down under thirteen point oh eight point one one oh, Building Permits and Inspections becomes Infrastructure and Development in two places in that section, and that's it.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number two four five three for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two four five four for the first reading.
So moved.
Seconded.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Rudisil.
Okay. Two four five four, the ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend the following sections of Title thirteen, Public Services of the Salisbury Municipal Code, Chapter thirteen point one two, Sewer, by deleting the references to Department of Public Works in Sections point oh six oh B and point one zero zero B one, and replacing with the Department of Infrastructure and Development by deleting the position of City Engineer in Section point oh five oh A, and replacing it with the Director of the Department of Infrastructure and Development, and by deleting the references to Public Works, Sections point oh six oh B, point oh eight oh D five, subsection point, excuse me, point one zero zero B, point one, and point two zero zero C two, and point two two oh D, and replacing those with reference to, references to Water Works. Again, just changing the names here in lines thirty-nine and forty, repeatedly in subsection B, except sometimes Public Works becomes Infrastructure and Development as it does in the first two cases, and then later it becomes Water Works. Water Works in D five of thirteen point one two point oh eight oh. And down under thirteen point one two point one hundred, it becomes, Public Works becomes Infrastructure and Development the first time, and Water Works the second time. And Public Works becomes Water Works under thirteen point one two point two zero zero. And also, the same change in thirteen point one two point two two zero. That's it.
Questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number two four five four, for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two four five five for the first reading.
So moved.
Seconded.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Boda.
Okay. An ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend the following sections of Title fifteen, Buildings and Construction of the Salisbury Municipal Code, Chapter fifteen point two, Grading and Excavation, Sections point oh three oh, point oh four oh, point oh five oh, point oh six oh, point oh seven oh, point oh eight oh, and point one zero zero. Chapter fifteen point two four, Housing Standards, Sections two seven zero B, four nine, point four nine zero, point one oh eight oh C, and point one seven zero zero, Chapter fifteen point two eight, numbering the houses and lots, Sections point oh three oh and point oh four oh, and Chapter fifteen point three six, Trailers, Sections point oh three oh B and point oh three oh D, by deleting the references to Department of Building Permitting Inspections and replacing them with the Department of Infrastructure and Development, by deleting the references to the Director of Building, Housing, and Zoning, and the Public Works Director, and replacing them with the Director of the Department of Infrastructure and Development, by deleting the reference to the Internal Services and replacing it with Finance to update the citation to the Annotated Code of Maryland, and by deleting the references to Department of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance in the definition of Family, Section one point C, and in the definition of Housing Official, and replacing those references with the Housing and Community Development Department. Again, I, I'll skip the whereas clauses now, therefore, be it ordained by the City of Salisbury, that Chapter fifteen point two zero, fifteen point two four, fifteen point two eight, fifteen point three six of the Salisbury City Code be amended as follows. Beginning under fifteen point two zero, point oh three oh, we're changing the names. Department of Building Permitting Inspections, Department of Infrastructure and Development. That same change is occurring down under fifteen point two oh, point oh four oh. And under fifteen point two oh, point oh five oh, Public Works becomes Director of the Department of Infrastructure and Development. Under fifteen point two oh, point one hundred, Duties of, we're changing Building Permitting Inspections to Department of Infrastructure and Development. And that is occurring under subsection B of that section. And under subsection B one, prior to initiating, instead of imitating, that was previously in there. So that's just correcting that typo. And under line one thirty-six, Department of Building Permitting and Inspections becomes Department of Infrastructure and Development. Fifteen point two four, point two seven zero B, Internal Services becomes Finance. Fifteen point two four, point four nine zero, Department of Building becomes Department of Infrastructure and Development. And Director of Housing, Building, Housing, and Zoning becomes Director of Department of Infrastructure and Development. And Department of Neighborhood Services becomes Housing and Community Development in line one sixty-nine. And also in lines one seventy-three and one seventy-four. in line one sixty-nine, and also in lines one seventy-three and one seventy-four. Public Works becomes Infrastructure and Development in lines one eighty-four and one eighty-five. And lines one ninety and one ninety-one. Internal Services becomes Finance. Public Works becomes Infrastructure and Development in lines two hundred and two oh two. And Public Works becomes Infrastructure and Development in line two fifteen. Also, Building Permitting and Inspections becomes Department of Infrastructure and Development in lines two twenty-five and two twenty-six. Internal Services becomes Finance in line two thirty-eight. And under, beginning with line two forty-six, the section one oh four of Article fifty-two is now changed. Courts and Judicial Proceedings, Article seven dash three oh two. And the year, or the addition for that prior code is eliminated. That's it.
Questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two four five five for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I was just informed that we are running out of tape. It will take about one minute to change the tape. This is a first for me, so.
Go to the glove.
Yeah. I guess we can change the tape, Keith.